Do you know is Ross coming tonight?
I'm here, Doc.
Okay. 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 We have the recorder going and are you ready Jenny? You want a minute or?
I'm ready.
Okay. Well, I would like to call to order the regular scheduled council meeting February 21st, 2018. It is 7:00 PM. But y'all join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. We have a, hopefully, a quick agenda, but we will see. Sometimes it, when it seems like it's going to go quick, it takes a long time. First on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar and I would look for a motion in a second on that if there is no discussion.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Jacobson, second by Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Open forum this evening. We have two people from the District 181 here with us. Steve, I forget your last name, but I, but please come up to the podium. Lane, Lane instructed me that you're the person tonight, so welcome and thank you very much. So I'll turn the floor over to you.
All right. Thanks, Your Honor, and members of the City Council. Thanks for allowing us some time on your agenda here this evening to provide a little bit of an update. My name is Steve Lund. I'm the Director of Business Services for Brainerd Public Schools and with me tonight is Superintendent of Schools, Lane Larson. So we're going to briefly, we're going to, to be respectful of your time, we're going to briefly try to encapsulate nearly four years of work into about 20 minutes this evening. We want to allow for some questions though, so we're going to move through the information fairly quick so that we can have some opportunity, if you have some questions, throughout and definitely when we get to the conclusion of it. So, so while we're here this evening, we want to talk a little bit about the process that has led us to the comprehensive facilities plan. We want to talk a little bit about the plan itself. We want to talk about how we have proposed to finance or pay for that plan. And then we want to talk and conclude a little bit with informing you about the election and some of those key dates that are coming up. So as we've navigated our way through this process, and it's been a long time that we've been working on this, we've always been grounded in a goal. And that goal is to really put together a plan for facilities that promote opportunity, innovation, and success for all learners within our school district. And that, that process has really transcended nearly four years of time. And that process has been very collaborative. It's been very inclusive. We have reached broadly and both deeply into our community to try to elicit feedback to really develop this plan. This plan in no way, shape, or form represents anything that's been designed or created in a vacuum. It really represents what we believe is the feedback we have heard from our communities in putting this together. It's included things such broad reaching as surveys, both online and scientific with phone calls to 400 households. We've dialed it down even further into about 150 listening sessions across our community, both internally, within our organization, and outside in our community. We have even brought it down further than gathering that feedback into about seven different work groups specific to issues within the facilities plan itself. And then over that course of time, we have put together one comprehensive plan that addresses all 12 of our school buildings across our district. So when you look at that comprehensive plan itself, you can be broken down into the three ballot questions. And those three ballot questions are very distinct in the fact that they represent two levels of our organization. The ballot question number one really focuses on the elementary schools and our early learning facilities. Question two focuses on our secondary schools and our alternative facilities, alternative education facilities. Question three, which is actually connected then to question two, is an upgrade of an auditorium to a regional performing arts center facility. So let's talk a little bit about ballot question one. As I mentioned, ballot question one really focuses on the elementary and the early learning function of our facilities. It proposes a new elementary school to be constructed in Baxter. It takes the existing Baxter facility, which has a lot of limitations from a site perspective, and it really centralizes and utilizes by through repurposing that facility for early education, a program that has far less demands on the site limitations that that facility poses to us. With that, we will centralize that early learning education, but we will also have a presence with comprehensive early learning programming both at Brainerd as well as right here in Nisswa. Okay? In the plan, it, it calls for additions and extensive remodeling of our existing elementary schools across the Brainerd, the Brainerd proper area and extending all the way up here to our Nisswa Elementary School. And in conclusion of that, it also provides significant updates to the Washington building, the former Washington High School building, which has really been repurposed to centralize some of those early education. That'll be our early education program facility for the Brainerd part of our district. And then it'll continue to house district offices as well as be the home for Tornstrom Auditorium that will continue on. So let's dial in just, I want to talk a little bit about the Nisswa School. And we'll dive a little bit deep into the Nisswa School. As we looked at the Nisswa School and with all of them, we really got the process started grounded with a lot of information. And some of that information was looking deeply into the condition of our schools and trying to identify those future maintenance needs that loom out there in the next 10 to 20 years for our facilities. And a lot of that, as you can imagine, is driven by age. So when you look at our elementary schools, you can see Nisswa highlighted there is approximately 66 years old. The core of that building constructed in 1952, a mid-century modern, if you will. Okay? So as we now look at what that means for future maintenance costs, you can see kind of where it lies in that as well. The total of that future maintenance that looms out there for our school district is nearly $90 million. And as you can see, the Nisswa School attributes to about $6 million of that $90 million. Okay? In addition to that, we did a demographic study. And keep in mind, we've been at this for a while, so that demographic study really began in 2015. Okay? So when we did our demographic study in 2015, it looked out 10 years. And as a whole for us, as a school district, it projected enrollment growth of about 500 students. For us, what that means is about 7.5% over a 10-year period. So when you break that down, it's about a little bit less than 1% per year. Now, it won't actually come out to that each year consistently. It's going to ebb and flow a little bit. What we did then was we took that enrollment and we tried to fold it into the current capacity of our buildings to say, how much room do we really need? Because we knew we had an elementary issue with capacity, okay? Not just necessarily in Nisswa, but across some of our other elementary buildings as well. And as you can see, from an elementary perspective, we anticipated enrollment growth to be as high as 26, 25. Right now in our six elementary schools, we have capacity of about 2,150. Our current enrollment right now is just under 2,500. So we knew that we're a little bit short on space right now, and you can feel that when you enter our, all of our school buildings. What's interesting to note here though is when you dial this down a little bit closer into Nisswa, when that study was completed in 2015, the student population right here in the school was approximately 275 kids. We had capacity here of about 250. We call this a two-section school. It's got two of everything K through four. Okay? So when you look at our current enrollment right now, you have surpassed what we expected to have for enrollment growth in this area for the next 10 years. You did that in the first three years. These numbers are real now that we've progressed in time beyond the point in which we completed that study. We said that that 275 over a 10-year period for Nisswa Elementary School could grow as high as 286. Right now, you have approximately 300 kids in that school. We have looked deeply at some of that information as we've gone through this planning process and have made adjustments along the way. And so when that, when we looked at Nisswa Elementary, we made some of those adjustments thinking that perhaps we ought to start positioning that school to be a three-section school as we look to bring it into that roughly 400 student capacity. But we reexamine that as we saw some of that develop, that data begin to develop into actual results for us relative to enrollment, and we begin to expand that size. When you look at the future plans for Nisswa, these are conceptual. What we've done through our process right now is really identified the amount of space that we need and the type of space that we need. What's being proposed here through design isn't probably what you're going to really see if the project is approved on April 10th. But what we've identified is making sure that we have attributed enough space and the type of space so that when we put a cost estimate to it, we're going to be relatively accurate. What it means for Nisswa Elementary is expanded classroom space for K-4 as well as preschool learning, as well as an extra gym station that's much needed, additional cafeteria space, and a secured entrance point onto that building. But when you look at the whole investment then into question one, there again, that includes all of the elementary schools, you can see where Nisswa lies in that. The plan calls for an investment into this school here of about $12 million. All total across those six buildings, including Washington as the seventh, you can see that the total is $104 million. And I want to talk a little bit about some of those big numbers as we get a little bit further into this. So let's talk just briefly about ballot question two. Like I had mentioned before, ballot question two really focuses on that secondary structure of our organization. Brainerd High School, alternative education relative to the Brainerd Learning Center on the east side of Brainerd, and the Lincoln Education Center, which is located in the former Lincoln Elementary currently to the east of Brainerd High School. The plan for ballot question two then is actually taking all of our 912 students and putting them under one roof on that north campus building. It remodels that south campus building, actually taking it from its current size of about 117,000 square feet, deconstruct it down to about 71,000 square feet, and transfers that Lincoln program, which is currently in the former Lincoln Elementary School, right onto the campus of BHS. It allows for that program to have expansion opportunities, which I've heard about for the past nine years I've been here. Every year, I have heard about the expansion that's needed for that program. That program is a regional draw for us. We take in students that are far beyond just Brainerd students, the Brainerd Public Schools. It is a regional facility in which we serve very specific needs. It does not necessarily have a net cost to us because we do tuition back the cost of that program to the districts in which they send their students here. But as you can imagine with anything, the more revenue you can bring in, you can spread your fixed costs. So to have the opportunity to grow that program, not only does it help us serve the needs of students in our region, but it does help us organizationally as well to become more efficient. It remodels the Brainerd Learning Center, which houses right now the alternative education center for our district on one half, and the other half is early child programming. As we see early child programming expand consistently over time in our district, centralizing that over to the former, the current Baxter Elementary, provides us opportunity then to have expansion opportunity within the alternative education center. That alternative education center is also a regional draw program for us. It does not just serve Brainerd public school students. It addresses some safety and security issues as well as if you have had a, or do have a Forest View student, you know the challenges we have with some of the drop off and pickup issues. This plan will address hopefully trying to improve that through a little bit more of a redesign of that. And of course, as we move that Lincoln education program, center program over to the former south campus building, allowing it for expansion, we deconstruct Lincoln then and help in a vision to take that Brainerd High School and begin to move it a little bit further out into our community. And we've talked a lot about what that means for Fifth Street, and we still have conversations surrounding that. So when you look at that ballot question two, the total cost into that, into that secondary school and alternative education is approximately $93 million. You can see the biggest cost driver on that is approximately $80 million that goes into BHS. We've had a lot of questions about that. It's a big number. And we've had a lot of questions saying, well, wow, can you, can you rebuild, can't you rebuild a high school for that? Well, not quite. A good example that kind of lies a little bit to the south of us is Sartell right now. The voters passed a referendum for them to construct a new high school. Their high school is going to be slightly smaller than ours, and they're going into that with a budget of roughly $100 million. So what we intend with this is to really maximize what we can and bring that facility up to current standard by using the asset that we have. And we heard that from our community, is try to limit the use, or try to limit the new construction and focus on trying to use the assets that you have. We also heard that there's a strong desire to keep that high school where it is. We're not a community that we've heard that we want to relocate our high school out on the fringes. If we can allow that to continue to be an anchor for downtown Brainerd, we've heard that consistently as we've been out talking with our community. Ballot question three then. Within that question two, in the renovations and remodeling of Brainerd High School includes the addition of auditorium with a capacity of about 950. And think of it in terms of an auditorium that meets the needs for 912 education. Now, when we've all been out in the community talking about that auditorium as part of that project, we consistently heard the message of why not maybe take advantage of an opportunity to create something regionally and leverage what you're already doing and create something a little bit bigger that has a broader reach. So what we did was we structured that in a third question on the ballot that will let the taxpayers decide if they do want to invest into something that'll have a little bit broader reach from a facility standpoint. In question two, we have designed an auditorium that meets the 912 needs of our students. Question three upgrades that from about a 950-seat auditorium up to 1,200 seats and adds many more enhancements that take that facility to the next level. With that, there's an additional $8 million that's associated with that ballot question. So let's talk a little bit about the finances. When you total all of this together, you're going to come up with a number that equals $205 million. So what we have done, we've known that it's comprehensive. It's a comprehensive project. And we've had a lot of talk about that, that size of that dollar amount. But if you look at us as an organization, we are one of the largest school districts in greater Minnesota. And in fact, when we do a lot of our comparisons, we do compare ourselves quite often to metro districts just because there's many metro districts that, of are at our size. So when we look at it, trying to maintain 12 facilities across 520 square miles, we have quite a job to do. And when you look at how we've maintained our facilities, we've done a very good job of maintaining the facilities, but if you look at when we've made major investments in our community into our schools, you can see that there's a gap that exists. We made investments on kind of a replacement cycle that averaged about seven to 10 years until we constructed the high school in 1968. The next new building that came online then was Forest View in 2004. As a community, we took a 35-year pause and really did nothing major. During that time period, those needs didn't go away, and in fact, I'll say that they compounded. We've done a good job in maintaining what we have had, but we've really been limited in the major investments that we've made. That's good news and bad news. The bad news is we really haven't done anything and the issues have compounded. The good news is we haven't spent the money. So when you look at us organizationally, we carry relatively low debt based on the size of our organization. So we're positioned well organizationally and financially to take on a little bit larger project because of that. So when you look at trying to tackle a $205 million project, we really started to look at every opportunity we have to tap into funding sources that are available to us. And we really categorized that into three different levels of funding. That first level of buckets that you see in this illustration, first of all, we use the buckets to help empty the barrel of projects that we have, okay? $205 million worth. That top tier of buckets are existing funds that we receive right now every year on an annual basis to help us maintain our facilities. Organizationally, we bring in about $3 million each year to take care of the capital needs and maintain our 12 school buildings, which encompass nearly a million five square feet. We intend to dedicate about a third of those resources, about a million dollars, that we will issue bonds and use that million dollars to pay them back over time. We have identified pieces of this comprehensive project that we would have used those funds for anyway over that time period, and we can capitalize on being able to do those projects right now in this comprehensive plan and be able to bundle them. Okay? So that encompasses that first series of funding sources. The second are going to be bonding authorities that the school board already has. These are very project-specific. Because of that, we have used them very limited. They're available for school boards if they foresee an issue that lies outside of that annual funding that they receive. We have used them sparingly, so we have some opportunities here to tap into some of those. For example, abatement bonding, abatement bonding was provided to school board's authority by the legislature simply to take care of parking lots. As you can imagine, we have a lot of parking lots, and in fact, we have a million, about a million five square feet of asphalt that we care for. And when you look at the funds that we receive each year, we try to dedicate that to the care of our, of our schools. Well, as you can imagine, at some point in time, the legislature identified that that's a, that's a need that school districts have and have given them the authority to bond for projects such as that. That's an example of a very specific project that we have bonding authority for. There's many others, but are very specific. But when you look at the comprehensiveness of the project, we have the opportunity to use some of those bonding sources in this project. What's left then, and what we've tried to minimize, is that voter-approved amount. That's the amount that you're going to see in the ballot, on the ballot when you step into the voting booth on April 10th. And when you look at the plan, it takes that $205 million then and starts to bring it down to an amount that's about 145 when we look at that voter-approved. And then you can start to segment it into the different ballot questions. So let's take a look at that existing funding component. There again, starting at $205 million, we can tap into nearly $30 million, leverage the existing funds that we have right now to tackle about $30 million of that $205. The existing funding sources, the bonding authorities that we have right now, we can tackle nearly another $32 million of that, bringing that $205 down to 145. Now, and you can see what that happens when you look at the voter-approved authority, and there again, those are the amounts that you're going to see on the ballot when you step into that voting booth on April 10th. That question one takes $104 million then brings it down to 68 million. Question two takes the 93 down to 69, and we really leverage all of those sources that we possibly can on those two, on those first two questions because they represent the greatest needs of the district. So what remains on that ballot question three then is going to be all voter-approved. Okay? Now, what's very important, then you can see the monthly tax impact. The monthly tax impact for that debt represents the two, the two middle categories, or the middle category and that second category. Because even though that middle category represents authority that the board has to bond, the payments of that are added on to our property tax levy. The top does not. Those are already funds that we receive from both the state and our local property taxpayers. And of course, the voter-approved also is included in that impact. So the impact represents the center funding sources as well as that voter-approved. We have been very intentional on estimating, on using the estimated tax impact using a median home value. When we looked at tax impact, we really wanted to look at it, what it meant for that average property owner in our district. So we were very intentional in using that median home value to kind of represent that. So when you look at the tax impact across all three questions, comes in at about $7 a month. Now, this is, this tax impact, what's important to note is that, number one, when you look at the impact relative to the amount, there's a couple of things at play. Number one, we're positioned well with debt organizationally. Number two is we're a big district. We're a big district not only in terms of size and scope as, when we talk in terms of students, but also in terms of a tax base. We are nearly 520 square miles of property. And I'm sure the legislature throughout time structured districts so that they would, they would have that type of tax base so that they could minimize the individual impact for the local taxpayers when it comes to funding improvements for their schools. So for us, that means we have a tax base of about $5.2 billion that we spread that over. So it can take a large project like that and really make it comparable to many other districts across the state of varying size. Let's talk a little bit about the election. I hope I'm close on time here. So right now, actually, early voting, Minnesota has very, has loosened early voting, what was formerly known as absentee balloting. So early voting actually starts on Friday. So anytime on Friday or leading up to the election, you can go to the courthouse, second floor on Laurel Street there, and you can fill out an application, request a ballot, and you can vote anytime starting Friday leading up to the election on April 10th. The actual election itself is scheduled for Tuesday, April 10th. We intend to have voting hours going from 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM. Because we're the only thing on the ballot, we tried to combine some polling locations to make sure that we could operate that election efficiently. I would encourage you to go to blueprint181.org. If you don't want, if you don't remember that, remember to hit, to go to our district website, and we have a blueprint181.org right up on the toolbar. Click on that. That really is the warehouse of a lot of information relative to the facilities project. It also includes a tax impact calculator, so you can actually enter in your estimated market value, and it'll tell you exactly what your tax impact is for your property based on your EMV. Okay? And then also on there is going to be the combined polling locations. So you can take a look at what your polling location normally is and see if it has been combined so you make, we make sure we get you to the right place on April 10th. So here's what the ballot language looks like, and it's very intimidating. The ballot language, by law, what we are responsible to do as a school district is inform taxpayers, number one, how much we're asking them for. So you can see embedded in there is $68 million for question number one, question, 68, 360, I believe it is. So we have to make sure we inform them of how much we're asking and what we intend to use the funds for. So you can about imagine the comprehensiveness of the project. We worked for weeks to try to get this to the point where we could keep it as minimal as possible, but yet not constrictive for us so that we could get everything done that we've proposed in, in those projects. Question two is very similar. Comprehensiveness of question two also lent for a little bit of a lengthy ballot question, but by law, we have to inform the taxpayers of what we intend to do with those funds. As you can imagine then, as you move to question three, a little bit lesser because that project is very specific. The scope is not as broad as questions one and two. Now, I want to talk just a little bit about questions, the, all three ballot questions. So we have structured this so the ballot questions act independently. Ballot questions one and two are independent of themselves. They can live and die on their own. Question three, however, is contingent on question two. So question three can only pass then if question two passes, which would make sense because question three takes an existing project that's embedded in question two and upgrades it to that regional performing arts center. Okay? So, but know that if you go in, even if we have some confused voters that day, it really is, we count the votes on each question and see how many votes are, and the majority will decide. Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to come in and share some of this information. You really got an abbreviated version of this thing. As you can imagine, we've been working on it for nearly four years. It's, it's an exciting, exciting project to work on. We're out doing about two to three of these every day on average right now. Our responsibility is really to get information out. We really want to make sure that everybody has the information that they need and are equipped to make a good vote either way on April 10th or before, starting on, early voting starting on Friday. So if you bump into friends and neighbors that haven't heard about it, please pass along that, hey, I heard a presentation, sounds kind of interesting. Get them to the website, that blueprint181.org website. It's got, it's a treasure trove of information relative to all the work that we've been doing, has a tax impact. It's got upcoming listening sessions and informational sessions that we have to spread information about the project. If they, if one of them fits into their schedule, we want them there. Know that we will come and do presentations for one to 1 million. Okay? And in fact, we just had a presentation this week for one person, and we will do that. So if you have any type of group that you would like us to come speak at, we're there. Now, do you have any questions?
Question, you already have a levy from a previous voter-approved. When does that expire?
Yes, so the previous, our previous voter-approved debt is Forest View. That was structured on a 20-year term, and we have approximately four years remaining on that. What we intend to do with the debt structure is fold in our new debt behind that. So that debt would remain and be paid off, and the new debt would be folded in behind our existing debt.
If question number two does not pass, what's plan B?
We get that question very often. If question, any of the questions don't pass, what's your plan B? If you go back to looking at the slides in which we tap into the funding sources that we have available to us, they're quite limited, and which is why we haven't used them much in the past, because they really don't accomplish that comprehensive need that we have in the district. Comprehensive need. So the needs don't go away. So our plan B would be if we have a question, questions that do not pass on April 10th, we need to listen more and learn more from what we learned, what we heard on the results of April 10th, and we intend to come back. of April 10th, and we intend to come back out with something based upon what we heard. The earliest we could come back out with a question would be the November election. And at this point, that would probably be our plan B because the needs just don't go away.
Steve, do you know yet or what the interest rate is on that bond and what that will be?
So we have several, as you can imagine, with the complexity of that structure, we have several different bond issues in there. By and large, the term will be 25 years. The average rate is about 3.72, tax-exempt rate. We've also into our plan, we've also baked into if all questions pass, we're looking at a four-year construction cycle, and we've included in that construction inflation because we know construction costs will continue to rise, and we wanted to be responsible and include those into our cost estimates.
And so would it be anticipated then, for the most part, for that 25-year period, that all the school buildings would be relatively maintenance-free? I mean, no major roof redo, you know, redos?
We get that question often too. And that really surrounds, the question comes, you know, when people hear that we're going to dedicate a portion of our annual revenue to do some of this project, to bond for this project, they're concerned, well, are you going to leave yourself with enough revenue to continue to maintain the facilities? In our planning work, the answer is yes. So what we've done is we've been very intentional. When you look at that $205 million, embedded in that $205 million is a lot of that $90 million of work that we've identified that looms on our horizon, and we're gathering up a lot of that, putting and accomplish and putting some of that into that $205. When you look at it, the actual physical construction component, the added space or, you know, actual added or changed buildings, is only a portion of that project. There's just so much of that needed maintenance that's included in that. That will position us well. We've looked at, we've looked further out, and what our estimates show at this point is the improvements that we do will far surpass the 25 years that we have to pay for them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gary? John? Tyler, I saw you.
With the early election.
Early voting, yep.
What is the, you guys have numbers on what the vote for response rate is? Do you want to be technical? Is it high?
Yes, it's been increasing. And I want to say, I think Debbie Urickson, who managed the elections for the county, I want to say that was the early voting encompassed up to nearly 30% of the last election. It's significant. So we've always thought that we've got to get information out ahead of the April 10th election. Our deadline is actually Friday. We want to do as much as we can to spread the information because voting will begin on Friday.
Talking about the safety, is it, we dropped it out there.
We apologize for that.
That's okay.
We're going to, we aim to improve.
How long will a project like that in procedure take?
Yeah.
Talking about the security, I can still walk into that school.
Yes, and, you know, even, that's a good example because Forestview is not quite 15 years old, and look at what school security has changed in that recent 15 years, just when that building was constructed. You know, our hope is that we will prioritize the beginning of these construction projects aggressively and focus on those things that are the most, that have that most priority. And I would argue with anybody that safety and security shouldn't be the highest priority.
And the party that we had is all from J. Paul, they'd be security of all stuff. And when I made the first thing, we said, yeah, there's a, yeah.
School safety is as much as we can do with prevention as well as response. We really feel good about where we are from a response standpoint. We need improvements on some of the prevention. And this facilities plan has a lot of that in it, a lot.
Go ahead, Peter.
What was the rationale for April versus November? Do you have to bear the cost of the building?
It's a good question. Yeah, it's a good question, one we do get often. Do we have to bear the cost? We do, yeah. So as a special election, we do have to bear the cost of that. To be honest, you know, we've been at this now for over three years, and we really felt like we were very close to actually have it on the November ballot this past November. But we just didn't feel we had all the pieces together. But we were close enough where we weren't prepared that we wanted to wait a whole another year. So we looked at the special election opportunities that we had between those November bookends, and April seemed to be like the best fit for us.
Do you think you might think you have a strategy that you can share in all of that?
You know, you can look at statistics a lot and see if there's any strategy or not with that special election on a different date. But that didn't really drive a lot of our decision-making. It was really all about timing. So, you know, I talked about construction inflation, for example. Construction inflation, we've estimated to be about 3.75%. Could be higher, could be lower. It was a number that we looked at historical data. On a $205 million construction project, in theory, that cost escalates by about $650,000 a month. So the soon, once we felt like we were ready and we were prepared, we felt like we better get this thing out.
Do you have the funding, lobbying organization?
Pardon?
Do you have the lobbying organization that you have?
Yes, so we've got all of our debt structure laid out in detail. Like I said, most of the, they do vary. The terms vary from 15 to 25 years, with the longest obviously being out 25 years. Right now, I know a lot of us don't like the volatility in the equities market, but it's helping the bond market, which drives rates down just a little bit from a borrowing perspective. Rates are still already at a historic low, but we feel that 3.72, we actually feel we can do better than that right now from a rate perspective. But we are, we're prepared to start issuing bonds if this thing is successful on April 10th. We are ready.
Anyone else in the audience have questions?
Again, thank you, your honor, members of the council. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. Jenny, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. The first item I have tonight is item D1A, and it is the agreement with the Brainerd Lakes Area Economic Development Corporation. This is the annual contract that we sign with them to partner with their services, provide them some assistance. We do budget for this cost, and we do have Tyler here. If the council has questions for him, otherwise it's a pretty standard agreement with Bladeck.
Okay. Council, any questions?
I'd move the agreement as presented by the staff.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Easy night, Tyler. Yes.
On item number B, raffle, did they come back in with the affidavit?
Yes, so for the next item, we have a couple of raffle permits for the next three items. The first one, from the Central Minnesota Gobbler's Chapter, they didn't, I didn't include the legal documents to show their nonprofit status, but I did request that and have received that now, so I recommend approval of that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the, under one, B, C, and D approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Brian. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Perfect. So item.
E.
D1E is, I believe I gave you a quick note in an email when I sent the packet, but the resolution basically allows for the city council to reimburse itself for any out-of-pocket costs that we would incur for the 2018 street improvement project, so for the bonding that we are stepping through. If we incur costs ahead of the actual having the bond proceeds, we can reimburse ourselves after, once we receive the proceeds. And this was recommended by Heather Casperson at PFM, so that's what this is. Any questions?
No, I understand it myself. Good. Motion?
I'll make a motion, accepting the resolution as prevented by the city staff.
Second.
Second by Jacobson. Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item, D1F, is the contract with the City of Nisswa and the Minnesota Public Employees Association, our supervisors' unit. I did provide one piece of paper at your seats this evening with a little highlight. I just had an error that was brought to my attention. I had indicated that the pay for the fire chief was per quarter, and it should have been per month, which is correct as we agreed. It just, I typed that incorrectly, so I will include that change with the document. Otherwise, John can certainly speak to the negotiations. I think they went very well, and we are both, I believe, happy with the result of the contract, so.
I agree, it went very well. The supervisors' union was wonderful, excellent to work with. I mean, I really appreciate it, Craig, and as the supervisor representative for the city and with their union rep. So I appreciate the level of cooperation and working together on it. Went good?
It is a two-year agreement, correct?
Correct, it's a two-year agreement.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we accept the approval of the labor agreement between the city and the Nisswa Minnesota Public Employees Association Supervisors' Unit.
Second.
Seconded by Johnson.
Question, has the employers' association read this and agreed to it? Have they signed off on it?
They did. They voted and approved it on their end before we brought it forward. Yes, thank you for asking the question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny.
The next item I have, item D1G, is a request for a part-time staff addition in the city clerk's office. I provided a memo as far as some of the details, but just a little bit of the background. This was a question that councilmember Jacobson had brought up, I think, one of my very first budget meetings here back August, September. And at the time, I had said that I'd like to spend some time and just get to know the operations, how things work, and see what the workload is, wanting to get familiar with that. So fast forward five to six months already, and have had a pretty good feel for the things that I'm working on, should be working on, what Maggie's been working on, and how we can complement each other in those things. As I know I had mentioned to the council as well last week, we just finished our year-end audit, and that went very well. And that speaks to some of the future improvements that I think we have opportunities to make with our finances, just record-keeping, and some of the things that Maggie and I have teamed up on really well. So some of the responsibilities of this individual would be just helping with providing customer service, answering phones, doing some clerical, organization-type things that would then help me allow to spend more time with department heads, big projects, with our road projects coming up, traffic committee, things like that. There's just a lot of things that want to keep moving from all areas. Having a little extra support staff would be very helpful. I know I've spoken to each of you, but I certainly would welcome questions and any feedback that you might have.
Thank you. Don, did you?
Well, just a comment. Normally, it would go through the personnel committee, but apparently it didn't do that, so it's up to us to decide. Many times, I've come into the office and walked up, and there's nobody at the front desk, so to speak. They're either off someplace else in the building or whatever. Whatever staff is here has to run around and come to the desk, and I don't think that's good customer service. Another thing I think that this person could do and should do is get that internet fixed, get our homepage fixed. It's so out of date, things are there that are years old, things that should be on there aren't on there. I think that would be reason enough to have this part-time person make sure that thing is up to date and kept up to date. Because you go out right now and try and find something, that's a monstrosity. So I would be in favor of it, but I don't know what the rest of you think.
I totally agree with you, Don. I mean, you know, I think when we hired the city administrator position, there were questions, you know, as to what we would need, you know, if there would be needs. And at that time, we were also concerned about things that are more forward-looking for the city, that the city administrator would probably like that position to do. And I think we, you know, need to make time for that. And, you know, so if Jenny can, you know, leverage some of these other things to help, you know, the deputy clerk and the city administrator's positions out, I think it's a good idea. I think your examples that you gave are spot-on. So that's my take. John, Gary, any?
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Okay.
I would move to approve the hiring of a part-time employee as laid out by Jenny in our minutes here.
I'll second that.
Just a question, she's saying $20,000 a year. Would that, that would be the max, right? Do we understand that's the max?
Well, that was my, hopefully, I would hope that that would be pretty darn close to where we land. I don't.
Just wanted to make sure. We had a cap on there.
Yep.
Don't want it to be 25?
No.
Understood. And, you know, so I would just, you know, a comment that I would say to back it up, if we get outnumber of months and you see something changing, please bring it to our attention, and I know you will.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next item I have is just an update from the liquor committee regarding Sunday sales. At our last council meeting, councilmember Jacobson had asked for an update as where things were at. So we met as a committee, and this memo is just a synopsis of that. Can certainly answer questions, but at this time, I think we're going to continue with being open on Sundays with the same hours that they've had, and I think it's been relatively successful in wanting to keep customers coming in consistently, which is the goal.
I would.
Go ahead, question?
I was just going to give a little bit more information. We did have a liquor committee meeting. Councilman Kramer was there, I was there, Pickle manager was there, spirits manager was there, Jenny was there. We had a conversation about all the pros and cons, so to speak, of the whole scenario. We talked about the fact that probably, the Sunday sales was probably not really making the city any extra money. It was probably more spreading out money that would have, that would happen on Friday or Saturday. You know, so then conversation kind of moved around to, well, what should we do? It was suggested and then discussed to keep the hours, or to stay open on Sunday, just for the convenience and the consistency. You know, rather than shifting hours, potentially losing customers to other stores. You know, rather than shifting hours, potentially losing customers to other stores, that sort of thing. We talked about maybe shortening the hours each day, or on the, on the Sundays in the wintertime. Um, there is a, kind of a strong sense that that was probably not a good idea because of, I think it was, some of it was around giving employees enough hours and so on and so forth. So, for the, I think what it came down to in some ways was the fact that we weren't losing money by being open on Sunday, but we weren't. But we weren't really making anything, so it's more about just to serve us to continue and be consistent. That's what, that's what I have is...
I have a question that kind of related to this. The, uh, application for a dynamic display sign for the spirits has been sitting in the, uh, planning and zoning area for about four, I don't know, it could be even five months. Nothing's been happening. Do you know what's going on?
Um, a lot has been happening behind the scenes. Um, we've gone through, um, a lot of revisions to the spirits of Nisswa logo to make sure we encapsulate what Nisswa represents and bringing, tying in some of, um, the aesthetic for the community. Also, just trying to make sure we, you know, hit the point of, of what the business is and, and what that looks like. So, we spent a little bit of time doing that. Um, and now we are at the point of getting what actual, um, the sign with the posts and, you know, how high and all of those things pulled together so that we can bring forward a final drawing to the planning commission. I believe it will be April because I think the March deadline has passed, but we are working on it. Um, I touch base with Brian weekly about it, and it's just taking a while. We want to make sure we do it right, so...
There was a comment about all the Christmas tree lights going around the present sign, so...
Yes, yes. No, we certainly want to get it done as soon as we can. Um, but we just want to make sure that since it's, you know, we're spending quite a bit of money that we do it right.
I think Brian is, uh, Brian Farrell is shooting for having it, you know, providing all things go well with, with planning and zoning, and he's going to be working to see that it should fit within all the requirements. But he would like to try to have it, you know, operating by May.
Well, you know those planning and zoning people are difficult to work with.
Tough, really tough.
There's a couple around the audience tonight, too.
So, it is, and if, you know, if somebody would like to see, um, you know, an example of what the sign may, the, the, not necessarily the whole... There may be a whole picture of the whole posts and everything, but if you're interested, stop and see Brian, or maybe Jenny has it, or... But it is, it is around, if somebody would like to see it.
I just didn't want it to disappear into the ether.
Yeah.
No, absolutely, we, we'll keep it moving.
It's interesting how many, and part, I think part of what has taken time is the number of different possibilities that, um, that, that, that the sign company put forward. I mean, it was, he's put forth quite a number of ideas and...
Bring money.
Huh?
Bring money.
Well, I think he's working on a, on a budget, so, uh, so he's, uh, so, so Brian's being very prudent, yes.
So, that was just an update, um, that I had for the council. Um, the next item is a letter that I received from NJPA regarding their 40th annual meeting of the representative assembly. Um, there is an opportunity for two council members to attend, um, the, the meeting, and certainly if there is interest, um, we can, we can indicate that and send it back. Um, you can let me know, um, pretty much anytime if you have an interest. So, wanted to provide that for council information. The next item I have, D1J, is some information from the League of Minnesota Cities regarding a potential workshop for the city council. The Mayor Heidman and I have been talking for quite some time, I think, about potentially what would be beneficial for the council if the council was interested in, in learning about, um, running effective meetings, communication styles, things like that. The league provides a free service to its members to come in and talk about a variety of items regarding, um, good governance, open meeting law questions, um, communication, and really anything beyond that if the council wishes to, to have that conversation. Um, I spoke with another city in the area, and they bring in the league every time, um, every January after an election, when there's new council members, to just orient the whole council as a new group to what structures there are in place, um, some good-to-know rules, things like that. Um, they'll also provide some advice or inputs if there are certain sections in our ordinances relating to council structure and things that they would suggest, either we're missing information or, you know, changing verbiage, things like that as well. Um, and so, it's, like I said, it's, it's a service if the council feels like that would be a good exercise to go through. Um, one option to have would be they would come up, meet with each council member individually, say spend 15 or 30 minutes, hear your concerns, if any, um, what maybe you would like the council to be more educated on, get some information, and then come back and put together something that was, um, specific for, for Nisswa and, and focus the discussion on something that would be productive. So, I wanted to share that information, and I did tentatively schedule Pamela, who was the attorney for the league, to come, just because her schedule was very busy, and I wanted to make sure that we kind of got some spots in there. But, um, I certainly want to get the council's feedback if there are other questions, um, see if it's a, you know, it's a worthy exercise to go through. So, I've heard very good feedback about it, but it's certainly up to the council.
Something that I, that I, there's a couple of things that I found, um, really kind of interesting about this, and that is, you know, one is, you know, I'm not sure how many, you know, how many people in the council have really read much about. Don, you've been in, around a lot, so you probably have quite a bit of experience, but decorum, different, you know, different styles, different, uh, you know, uh, how to, you know, when to interject, when not to interject, uh, so on and so forth. Probably be a good idea, you know, for us as a group to, to be, you know, to take that on. And then it's probably a good, really good idea, um, after elections to do that, when new people are coming in, to help get them up to speed. Because I think, you know, as we all know, when we came and sat at our first meeting, we didn't know much, you know? I mean, whatever experience we'd had in the past is all we had, is all we brought with us. So, you know, to set up a meeting that would help educate, um, I think would be something that, you know, that would really be good to check out now, learn what we can, and then see if, as well, if it's something we want to look to implement. I like the idea that the league will come and, and meet individually, and then tailor the meeting to the specific needs and not just come up and do a broad-based presentation. I thought that was very, um, interesting. So, um, that's my take.
Yeah, I, I think there could be some value there. I'm sure we all could learn something. Uh, problem is, though, I can't make that date. So, I'm, I will be gone, but if everybody else can, that's fine.
And I think it would be better for, right after the election, when you have a new council, well, maybe a new council, we'll see what happens. You never know. Uh, we've been together for several years now, and I think we work fairly well together. So, I don't know if it'd be as much advantage to us as waiting for right after an election. That'd be my take.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I'm certainly open to it. I agree with Gary, and, but I also agree with Don, you know, if we, if we were to do it at that point, um, or if we did it now, knowing each other like we do, um, it would give us an idea whether or not it would be useful for a new person, for a new group, or whatever. So, it could sway either way, but, I mean, for some reason, I'm available April 2nd.
Couldn't find anything to fill that time, huh?
Uh, not yet.
Okay. Well, do you want a formal vote, or do you, you mean, you know, it seems, I mean, it seems like it's about four, maybe three and a half people interested here. I, it sounds like Don's, Don, are you interested, but you just...
Well, I think it'd be more, more in tune to have it after there's an election, when you have, the legislature passes new laws, stuff like that, the interpersonal stuff with new members. It doesn't cost anything, but it costs somebody something to come up here, so... I mean, I'm not opposed to sitting down and talking with, with this young lady, uh, and see if she can find any problems, but I prefer it to be after an election.
April 2nd would be when we would do a one-on-one type thing?
Actually, it would be, um, March 5th would be the one-on-one, um, meeting, and then April 2nd, now with April 2nd, the one you were...
Yeah.
Okay. And we can, I can get some alternate dates from Pamela and get that changed so everyone can, can make the meeting.
Well, if we're gonna do it, send out an email as a notice.
Yeah. Let's go ahead and schedule it. And I think you were talking, like, that April 2nd would be a early evening sort of timeframe? Is that...
Yes, maybe, uh, well, and I would look for feedback from the council, but, um, maybe, you know, 6:00 or something, if it's not too late, but don't want to, you know, hour and a half or so, and then we'll be done. You have, you know, still, not too late in the evening, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm still a little...
Perfect.
We're, we're, we're trying for you. I mean, we're trying to find something.
Um, just a couple of general updates. Um, as I mentioned, we, uh, completed our year-end audit fieldwork last week. That went very well. Excited to, um, to kind of get the final reports from the auditors and work through the final details. Um, I expect that they would be at our March council meeting to present the audit, so we'll keep you informed about that. Um, working on finalizing the liquor license for our new restaurant. That is getting close to completion, so that's exciting, um, to see that wrapping up.
Is there an opening date, Seth?
Um, I do not know of an opening date, but I know that they're starting to order, wanting to get things ordered, um, food and liquor and things like that, so that's got to be...
It's in March.
Positive, so...
It's in March. I think there, I've heard a little bit here and there, but it's, there's a March opening.
Is there a test cook date?
I think we should, I think we'll see, we'll work that out, yeah.
Um, and the last item I had was just an update regarding our, our website, and it lets come up a few times, and, um, working with our current, um, vendor to hopefully get a feel for them by March 1st, if they're able to help us with kind of this, not complete redo, but, you know, kind of a facelift, facelift of the website. Um, if by that time, they're not able to do it, fit into their schedule, we'll move forward and find a, a company that can, that can help us out with that work and, and get that going, so... Um, until then, we'll continue to add council packet information and things like that to the website, and just keep that updated as we go, but...
Sure.
Yeah.
Have they been, has that company been very available and helpful as of the last couple of months? How's it been going?
Um, they, they have not been, um, available with the reach-outs that both I have done and Maggie has done with them. Um, but I did hear from them last week and hopefully getting a meeting set up so we can just talk about some of the, the needs that we're looking for and the changes, and see if it'll fit into their schedule. But, um, they do know that, would like to move forward with it. Um, so, we're shooting for that March 1st to determine that.
Are you going to be seeking any input from council, citizens? Um, have you been doing that? Is there, how, how are we going to, how are you thinking about bringing forward these changes and deciding what's prudent and...
The changes themselves, I haven't completely figured out yet. That will certainly, we'll reach out and, and get some feedback from a variety of people as far as what the look should be, but more along the general idea of, okay, menu changes and, and things like that, so that it's structured differently, wanting to make sure that, do they have the capacity to do it or not? Um, the actual changes themselves, less important than the, do you have time to fit in to do those things? Um, and if not, then we'll, we'll move forward and get a plan and keep it going so we can have something, hopefully not too many months, so...
Sounds, that sounds good.
That's all I have, unless there are any questions.
On the website, city staff has been working with you on the tour. You've been getting there as well, right? Or have you got to that point yet?
Haven't really got to that point, but they will most definitely be involved with...
Great.
Making sure they're, the right information is there for them, so...
Awesome. City attorney?
Mayor, nothing to report tonight.
Thank you very much then, Mr. Pearson.
That's sure.
That's, that's really sweet. And, uh, Mark Allen, city attorney, or city engineer, please?
Just what I talked to the public first, but, you know, we have the, you fieldwork and the, uh, right-of-way mapping for the road projects for 2018, notified MINDOT of the project, of the works, in the right-of-way, and, you know, we'll be coming to the March 14 Public Works Committee to see with the first round of questions on right-of-way and, you know, general road design plan, so...
Okay.
That's everything.
So, the guys working down by St. Colombo Road the other day when I went by, and had some equipment set up and working away, so, that's great. Thank you very much.
I don't know if this is the right spot to ask the question or not, but, um, with Grandview Lodge, all the things that are going down, down there, most of the conditions put on the permits to allow them to do what they want to do was that they're going to work with the street road committee that you were going to set up, Mr. Mayor, and everything else. Just wondering, how is that progressing? Uh, have we got a committee yet? Have we had a meeting, or just, what's the status?
We do, we're...
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let John...
Okay.
We're currently using the existing Public Works Committee. We've identified the members of that are going to be on the, um, West Linden. We've added a few people to, that'll attend the meetings of the public, current Public Works Committee. We're setting up the structure, what's our end goal, the goals of the committee, et cetera. When West Linden residents are pretty much back in force, so everybody's here. We've identified, we've asked them today to identify some people that would be interested in serving as go-betweens between the residents and sit on the committee as well. We've also identified, uh, we have a person from Grandview, the citizens, like I said, and then various other entities, county, municipal, or, uh, utilities, et cetera, as needed, to look at the whole plan. Eventually, by the time, our goal is to, by the time everybody from West Linden is back from winter, their winter hiatus, um, that we are, it'll probably then become a separate meeting from the Public Works, it'll be, kind of stand on its own. It'll be a very similar group of people. But yes, to answer your question, we do have the, the people identified. We're just putting the structure of it together at this time. And pretty much it's going to be, wait for everybody to get back, because we want them involved. And there were some were here today already, and Jenny's going to be getting emails, and we're putting together contact information with the help of the mayor's list, and they'll get all that put together, and so everybody's in the loop.
So, as this gets going, Don, um, Public Works is going to basically head it up. John's going to be the, the meeting chair, so to speak, for that. Um, I will be in, I will be involved, but I won't, I'm not going to lead the meetings. John wanted to take that task on, so, so he, he jumped right in on that. Um, I think there's going to be, what, about 10 people? It'll be close to 10 people on the committee, and then there'll be people that ebb and flow, you know, I mean, when we need somebody, when we need people from the county there to talk about things happening on County Route 77, they'll be there. Desmond with, um, P&amp;Z will be involved when need be. Utility companies, so on and so forth, will be, you know, will be notified and, and be part of this. They won't necessarily need to be at every meeting, so it's coming along.
Okay.
Very good. Anything more with the engineering? Mark, you're, you're done, and, okay, very good. On the agenda, item E, we're moving to item E, new business. Um, acceptance of the agreement with NJPA for Parks and Rec intern, and, um, there is, uh, there'll be council action requested for this. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have three items on the agenda this evening, this being the first. I've come up with, not something original to our department or to the city, but something that hasn't been in place for a while. It's an internship here within the Parks and Rec Department. I have reached out to a couple of organizations. Jenny actually came up with the link to NJPA for this opportunity, and it seems to be the best fit. I have been in contact with Sarah there at NJPA, and have a little bit of information in the packet for you, the program requirements, the staffing agreement between us and NJPA, and then the intern agreement between the student intern and NJPA. This is up to 80 hours, excuse me, up to 40 hours a week, up to 16 weeks, and up to $12 an hour. So, there's a kind of a cap on everything. It is a summer internship. I have come up with a job description. It is kind of split in between two different things. I call it inside and outside. Me being inside, from a program management perspective, activities, communication with parents and coaches, and then the outside activities, really knowing the nuts and bolts of park maintenance, tools, scheduling maintenance throughout the summer, all kinds of different activities that Terry would work with this candidate on. So, those are the ins and outs of the position. We would offer all kinds of programs and education for them. Number one, they'd be able to identify, set up, run, and close down their own program that, to their liking throughout the summer as well, and come up with their own ideas and let them run with it, and create their own program within the city, and really give them a learning experience and give them something to build on, on their own. So, I put a lot of thought into this, and I'm hopeful that you guys will agree to let me move forward with this agreement with NJPA. This is all paid for by NJPA. There's a couple of different options in regards to how it's done. We can pay them and submit a bill to NJPA through which we'd get reimbursed, or they can just submit time cards directly to them, and they'd be paid directly from NJPA at that point, $10.99 at the end of the year as an independent contractor. There's no health insurance, there's no liability for us, there's, we're getting somebody, they provide the candidates, we set up the interviews with them, we pick one, and it's all pretty structured, they do this all the time, so. Any questions on that?
Remind me again, I think we talked about it, but I'm not sure if anyone knows, but just the interview process, the selection process, if I'm remembering right, it's, they'll provide a group of, drawn a blank.
Candidates.
Candidates, yes.
Candidates that have the background in the program.
Right.
It's kind of a broad spectrum when it comes to that, that can be either DNR, it can be Parks and Rec, it can be city administrators, so the pool of candidates that come in is diverse, and then we're able to kind of pick and choose from resumes and set up interviews.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, Matthew, I think it's just a wonderful idea. I mean, in many ways. One is, I think, it'll help you grow the park and rec, and through the summer, when it's, you know, you've got the, you're gonna be doing the, probably the Thursday night movie thing again, you know? You know, and there's things, there's things going on. I think it's, I think it's a wonderful opportunity, not only for the city, but for a candidate to get some experience, and, you know, I think, so I just think it's a win-win, and, you know, I think we're probably all thankful for NJPA and the things that they do, and things, and the, just the possibilities they're able to offer, so.
From me personally, with the activities that we've got at Nisswa Lake Park and with the Gull Lake Trail, this will free up a little additional time for myself as well, so.
I just have one quick question for Tom. As an independent contractor, says the intern isn't eligible for benefits, et cetera, including workers' compensation and that, if we pay him, which is one of the options we can do, and then reimburse, do we hurt ourselves, or would we be better off letting NJPA pay him?
I don't know about hurting ourselves, but we would be better taking that second option, which is to have NJPA be the organization paying, not paying, and then seeking reimbursement.
Okay.
We're not signatory to this agreement, so I know Don was concerned about some of the other disclaimers that are in that paragraph nine, respect the independent contractor, but we're not a signatory to this. You know, ideally, we'd have some indemnification from NJPA of the city for anything that happens with that intern, but we're probably not gonna get that. But having said that, we're not in this contract, and I'm not uncomfortable with what I see at paragraph nine.
Great minds.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
My concern was if the intern was on the tractor cutting the grass for some reason, went and fell off and hurt himself, who's liable? And you're telling me we're not liable?
Unless you were able probably to show some extreme negligence on the part of the city, like you never train.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure.
There is no, there is no 100% safety net.
Well, I wonder if it'd be us who'd pay, or be NJPA would be paying. Okay, if the attorney's comfortable. I'm not, but I'll come.
Oh, did we make, I'll make a motion, or did you do that already?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we accept the agreement of NJPA for park and rec intern as presented by our staff.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jacobson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Keep him off of more.
Don't give him a chainsaw.
I was gonna say, you want the chainsaw instead? Good point. Next on the item that I have is the acceptance of the Gull Lake Trail location. You've received the request with the background information and the map. We have a couple of representatives here in the audience, I think, that might be able to speak if you choose, but we've, in 2015, actually, it's probably been a little bit longer than that, since the master plan has been approved by this council, by the council here in Nisswa, piloted by the leadership of the communities, first and foremost being East Gull Lake, which has already completed their portion of the trail. It will extend from East Gull Lake, going around the entire west side of the, of Gull Lake, on the west side of County Road 77, into the city limits of Lake Shore. Lake Shore's already started their construction project. Their current project ends where 77 shoots north, just on the other side of the Gull Lake Narrows. So, our application is going to be a joint application with the city of Lake Shore and the county of Cass, Crow Wing, and the city of Nisswa, to get the trail from there, across the bridge, following the north side of County Road 77, past Grandview Lodge and the pines, and turning north, meeting up with the southern end of Hazelwood Drive to Nisswa Lake Park and the tunnel to downtown Nisswa. That is the proposed trail location on the request this evening. We have a Gull Lake Trail Steering Committee that has been meeting, we had three meetings based on this, so we've had a lot of discussion on it, and the decision was a seven-to-one vote to accept this trail location from the Steering Committee level, and it is now here in front of the council. Does anybody have any questions?
And at our last meeting, just for background, I would say the majority of the meeting was spent on this topic, as to, you know, weighing the pros and cons of the different locations, and this was the committee's recommendation, as laid out here tonight.
I had a talk with Matthew a little bit about the, about the trail. I'm not against a trail, I think it'd be an asset, and I am a little concerned about a 10-foot wide trail, which I understand is state mandated or whatever. You're told me it had to be 10-foot wide. In some of the areas we go through, wild country, I'll use that term, there's no houses or whatever, it's not a problem, but when you get up to Hazelwood Drive, and you're looking at the confined space you have there, and the bridge and everything, to get through there without taking some property away from people who already have small lots, I'm just thinking that could be a real problem. So, I asked him, when, at what point, before we get too far down the road, is there going to be, I'll use the word, a hearing or a meeting with the residents who might be implicated in this, to get their input? I can imagine somebody who's at a nice home or landscaping on Nisswa Lake, isn't gonna want to see 10-foot taken for a trail, and I just didn't want to go too far down the road before we brought the people in to see what their responses were to the proposal. Not, I'm not against the proposal, I think the trail is good, but I know, Mr. Mayor, you like to get the public involved early on. I think in this case, it would be handy. I appreciate the work of the committee, seven-to-one vote is pretty overwhelming, and that's fine with me, and that was gonna be one of my questions, always the vote. But I would think that with whatever action we take tonight, we should stipulate that public hearings or public meetings be held as soon as possible before we get too far down the road and we can't change something, because projects like this. I remember my old, my former life, we were putting trails through a densely residential area. Nobody wanted them. Boy, there was people in the audience, and it was packed. Nobody wanted them, but we put them through, and after they went in, that was the best thing in the world, the people loved them. I expose that we can expect that here, too, but I just want to make sure we don't get so far down we can't make a change, and by approving the drawing we have here, I hope that means we can't vary from then to the future. That's my comment.
Could I speak on that a moment? So, this approval this evening is going to allow us to go back to the county engineers and have them look at the property owners, identify the property owners, and get some information regarding what property is available to us within the current right-of-way that we have, and what property would be required of us to purchase as an easement or a property purchase to have, to house the trail on a particular spot. So, this is the first tool of many things that are going to happen, so from a property perspective, property purchasing perspective, this, this kind of has to, we need to make the decision regarding where the trail's gonna go, so we can identify those property owners and get them in place. Number two, the public meetings, we have a small portion of the Steering Committee, Tessa, Sean, Hanson, myself, we're already working on getting maps, documentation, bullet points, processes in place, so we will be able to schedule as soon as possible these public meetings that are actually required as part of our grant writing process. So, we will certainly have those, a couple of those in place, both community-wide and with direct invitations to the people that are being affected.
Anything else, Don? At the moment, it's all right.
I'm willing to listen.
So, what I, if I may, so what I'm hearing then from Matthew is that we're not, we're not, I hate to use the word stuck, but we're not committed to this if the public hearings come out, and for whatever reason, 90% of the people affected or the community say, absolutely, we don't want this, we're back to the drawing board, but that'll affect the grant process, of course. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the Steering Committee and the council make the ultimate decision when it comes to the trail placement. This is the first step of the process that we need to solidify, so we can move forward.
I also, Mr. Mayor, I also spoke with Matt and Matthew, and I, I agree, I mean, I'd like to see a little more, it'd be nice if we could have all this input ahead of time. I mean, that route actually works into a lot of things that we're gonna be dealing with this year, like the County Road 77, and what the county said, they'd like us to have more stacking room in there, different things of that nature, where you could, I can almost see a project, this project blossoming into multiples, but, or overlapping into other projects, so I see what you're saying. But I share Don's, and I've shared that with Matthew, too, I shared Don's, I'd like to have more input before we actually sign, seal, and deliver, but it doesn't sound like that's what we're doing, we're just giving you the ability to go forward and actually get it to the public. Okay, so I'm clear. That may have been a muddy way for me to say it, but I'm clear, so, thank you.
I would like, I've had a talk with Rob Mason, who's in the audience here. I'd like, Rob is on the Legacy Advisory Board, he can, he could give us some information and share experience in that. You know, I have a letter that I'm gonna read into the minutes here at some point. My concern, just from what I've heard, and before I read my letter, and it's part of why I wrote my letter, is what we're, what we're, I think, asked to do tonight is to say, well, this is the likely, this is the road of the trail. And when I hear what Don, what I think I heard you say, and John, I think, what I think I heard you say, and what I'm thinking is, I would really like, before we commit to one path or the other, to get the citizens to have some public meetings, get the citizens' input. I had done a survey, it's in my, it's in my letter that I'm gonna read, but there are 188 residences that connect to Lower Royal Lake Road. There are no residences that connect to the other option that's listed here. And I, you know, I go into, and I'll read about it, I'm gonna stop right there, but I do, yeah, it was a seven-to-one vote. I sat in on that. I really didn't hear anybody bring up the comp plan, ordinances, smart growth, a lot of the things that our documents, our city documents address. So, but I'm gonna stop right now. Rob, if you would, I'd like you to come up and tell us a little bit about, you know, some of us at a previous meeting had Brian Pike, who's another legacy advisor, come and share. Rob is also on that board, he can share some about what the Legacy Advisory Board looks for, and so on and so forth, so please.
First of all, I'm city administrator for East Gull Lake, I've been that since 2014. Prior to that, I was on the city council for East Gull Lake for four years. Prior to that, I worked at Madison for 38 years. So, I've been involved in the tourism business and city government for quite some time. I was asked to get on the Legacy Committee by Mark Kavanaugh, who was on it prior. Roger Landers, who's a Nisswa resident, I understand, is also on it with myself, so Roger, myself, and Brian Pike typically go to the meetings in the midge together. So, we have a lot of conversations going up and going down, because we typically ride. And one of my first meetings, which was like two years ago, at that time, Nisswa was applying for a separate application for money for the, for the park, actually. And as I sat there as a new guy, just listening, because I didn't really know too much, what I heard was, they said, one of the head guys that runs the committee said, you know, they really shouldn't be doing it for the park itself, because that's not what they call the significant, a regionally significant project, and they use that words all the time. But then I sat back and I asked a question, I said, you know, Kathy Moore, who I see that you're considering, Kathy Moore is excellent. She, she actually put together the Gull Lake Trail project that the DPC considers the model for all applications. I mean, she's highly regarded within that committee statewide, so I think that's a great choice. But she said, or they said, you know, we can't give them any money, because they filed a separate application. And then I came, and I think ultimately I talked to Matt and some of your previous park and rec people, I said, you know, you need to find a, file an application that includes, because the Gull Lake Trail is one of the highest regionally significant projects within the DPC, or the, there's six districts, I believe, and we're District Two, which is basically from Brainerd all the way to International Falls and all of- basically from Brainerd all the way to International Falls and all the way up to the northwest. So it's a huge district, and a lot of tourism, you know, places in between. You asked me whether or not tourism, what's the, in East Skull Lake, who uses our trail? And I talked to Terry Hastings, and she told me, she says, well, in Lake Shore, we consider eighty percent residential use and twenty percent commercial use, or being tourism guests. And I said exactly the same thing, I said eighty, twenty, or seventy-five, twenty-five. Keep in mind, I was in the resort business for a long time. I was director of sales for the resort, so using that is a key. But the most important key I found as a counselor and being part of the committee was linking neighborhoods together. And the more neighborhoods that you can link together, when we first put a trail route together, it was quite controversial because we laid out a trail, and then we went to ask the citizens. And we found that wasn't a very good idea, because at the time we did that, all of a sudden the citizens said, I don't want to hear, or whatever it might be. Then we reverted back to actually going, the engineers pointed out, where is the right-of-ways? Where did we, where can we do a trail within the right-of-ways so that we don't have to spend a lot of money purchasing right-of-way? Asked Terry Hastings about purchasing a right-of-way, it's one of the most nasty processes you'll ever find. So I think, you know, looking at the routes and determining where the best right-of-ways are is a good way to look at it. I don't want to step on anybody's toes as far as a seven to one vote either, but I think that residential input is important, because you may find there's residents that want it within a certain area, because it can be very attractive. I'm working with Fairview Township a little bit, because they're trying to link their trail. They applied this last July for a segment number one of three segments. They were actually denied at the DPC, but they got a phone call back from one of the heads of the DPC, and they said, Marla, we want you next year to apply for the whole thing, not just one segment, all three segments, because we feel that, we don't want to just fund small little parts of the process, we want to fund the big thing. I mean, the whole idea is to get that Gull Lake Trail built all the way around as soon as we can. And I think if Fairview does, I believe by this July to do theirs, and I think you said, Lake Shore, you aren't quite ready for the July thirty.
It'll be slow, sneak in a year.
And, but the fact that if you can work together with Lake Shore, that would be a good thing. And what the DPC looks at primarily is, you know, how much local involvement is there in funding? Whether that be funding that came from a source, East Skull Lake, when we built our nine miles of trails, we received a great deal of funding from, it's called Cass County Fund Seventy-three. It's a, it's a fund that was set up off a tax forfeited land that county sold, there's six million dollars in the fund, and we were using the interest on that. Back in 2005, when we started the whole process, interest was a lot more than it is now. So we got some significant money from that. We also, the initial kick to the East Skull Lake Trail was, one of our resorts put a major development in in 2005, they had to pay a park dedication fee of ninety, ninety-nine thousand dollars. We used that and then other park dedication money that was in there as a match to go to the county to get money and to leverage it. We didn't get any money from the DPC because it wasn't even around. Most of our money came from Fund Seventy-three, the park dedication money, and the local residents. And we levy eighteen thousand dollars a year for our trail. We put half of that into a building fund for future use, the other half goes into maintenance. As I talked to Fred, we spend very little on maintenance, and the trails started in 2005, they were finished in 2011, all nine miles, and I believe this, last year I put the first patch on the trails for about three or four miles, and that cost us probably fifteen hundred bucks from Anderson. So Baxter told me, calculate about a thousand dollars per mile on maintenance on the trails. So far, we haven't come close to spending that. But over a period of twenty years, ultimately, you're going to have to do an overlay. So you want to stack that money up so that when you do an overlay, you can. I would say, you're getting your application together is a great thing, and doing that jointly with Lake Shore would be highly recommended. But look at those right-of-ways and determine what's the easiest right-of-way and where's it going to affect the most people. I think that'll be a big part of your decision. But the residents themselves can drive it. I've had residents call me in East Skull Lake, if you're familiar with Green Gables Road in East Skull Lake, that's a very narrow road, we have very little right-of-way. When we remodeled that road in 2015, part of the process was we wanted to put a trail in there. Let's just say we loaded City Hall one night with people that didn't want it. And there's people that do, but the older ones that didn't want it far outweighed. So we just, and the right-of-ways, there was no right-of-way, it went from edge of the road right-of-way to forty feet to sixty feet and then back. It was, it was a mess. And so we decided, don't fight that, because it's not worth it. So we put the trail in another location, and I told some of the people that were there, I said, you got to work on your support, and I said, until you get a majority of people on that road that want it, we probably won't discuss it. So we'll see. But if you have any questions at all on East Skull Lake, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a question. We have a little less than two and a half miles, no matter how you configure the trail roughly. If we applied for a grant, this is a grant, how much can you get as a percentage, half of the cost?
You know, I've seen a million-dollar grant, you know, that maybe five hundred thousand dollars given out, but yet the cities have contributed maybe fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars within some of those. One thing I'll tell you about the legacy fund itself, forty percent of the legacy fund.
Could I speak on this question? There is no set match, you don't have to have a particular percentage set aside. They'll fund the whole project if you meet their scores.
Right.
So.
And the scores are identified based upon, sometimes it's community participation, like if you have X amount of money in. One thing that Brian and I are working on, because I noticed, as I look at the grants of what's been given out around the state, of the funds that are collected via sales tax, that's where the legacy comes from, forty percent go to the Minnesota DNR, forty percent go to the metropolitan area, and greater Minnesota, those six districts, take the last twenty percent. Of the twenty percent money that's contributed, District Two has less than one percent of the money that's been given out since the fund was created, and that's about three or four years ago. So I've been arguing extensively to say, wait a minute, you know, Gull Lake, that's one of the highest priority projects in the state, and you're not looking at funding it? So I think the time is right, because I've told Brian, I said, he's the, one of the two commissioners, I said, you got to be in there fighting for our portion of it, because District Four, there's other districts that are getting thirty percent of the money. We've gotten less than one percent. So I think the timing is right to put together some significant projects that show some support. Fairview, for example, has over fifty thousand dollars in private donations from residents, not to mention they got a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from Cass County as well. So having that matching money is important. It's not entirely necessary, but it is one of the point processes that they look at.
Brian, I have a, I have a question for you, and it's, it's probably kind of a, I mean, when I think of it, and I think of the, you know, all the other areas now, it probably comes across as maybe a little bit of a greedy idea, that's probably not a great term for it, but, you know, as I sat in on the, on these trail meetings, you know, there was discussion about, obviously, connecting from Lake Shore to the tunnel here in Nisswa. And that is, that is, that is Nisswa's primary focus, and, which makes, you know, a lot of sense. There was also an idea of continuing wherever the trail turns off of 77, if it's up near 371 or farther back, but continuing across, going down thirteen and tying into the Paul Bunyan Trail down by Lake Hubert Store, which actually crosses out of Nisswa into Mission Township, probably.
Lake Edwards Township.
Or Lake Edwards Township. Would it be insane to try to do that whole project and present that whole project? Or, I mean, do you have any, you have a gut feel for that?
Let's just say, it seems to me like the bigger the project, sometimes the better they look at it, particularly if they're well-funded. Now, if you can come in and say, okay, you know, if you add up Lake Shore's money, you add up Fairview's money, you add up whatever money, you've got, you know, the more significant the project, potentially, it's more regionally significant. They use that word all the time, what's regionally significant? And certainly, this amount of trail from East Skull Lake all the way to what you're talking about would be pretty significant.
Okay.
And you don't really know until you try.
Just as an informational notice, if we approve something here tonight and hire the grant writer, what's the timetable for all this stuff? Is there a timetable?
You have to have it in by July 31st.
July 31st of this year to get into the funding cycle for next year.
And if you miss that, it's a whole year?
Correct, correct.
And if you remember right, you know, part of this would be to tie in with our redoing of Hazelwood.
Right.
Which would need to be next year, and if we couldn't do Hazelwood next year, it wouldn't fit under our bond. So there is a timing component here.
I'd say be creative in the kind of way that you say you're putting towards a project to the business. If you've got a street project you're doing, and you can say, hey, we're contributing as much to it, and that's a part of it, that could be very helpful, because you're, again, showing support towards a trail. You know, you build the roads.
You know, and I don't, I don't want to be contrary to what you just said, Gary, you know, we do have flexibility with Hazelwood. I mean, you know, yeah, if it doesn't fit, if it doesn't. We have two years from, is it, Mark, is it, has that clock started yet?
Well, no, I guess, I mean, that's, we've got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's after we issue bonds.
Yeah, so, but we have two, from whenever that clock starts, I don't know when that clock's going to start, but we have approximately two years to use that, the money that we bond for. And then, as we've discussed in previous meetings, if certain road projects don't happen in that time, then we can, you know, we can shift. And so, because I, you know, I certainly absolutely agree that the trail along Hazelwood, whether it's halfway down Hazelwood or all the way down Hazelwood, it would be absolutely imperative-wise that we would see that those two happen together. And I think that schedule will work its way out step by step, and, you know, but it is certainly a very important piece as far as, I think, you know, looking for funding, and probably, you know, from legacy is to say, yeah, we've got this road project we're doing, and we're going to be going right alongside it, that's, the trail's part of it. Absolutely, yeah.
Put in the engineering expense, I mean, if the engineering expense can be collaborated, that's a good thing.
And this, this whole project is based on partnerships, you know, surrounding communities, the counties, from start to finish, that's, that's how this whole thing has started. And that has to be internally as well, between departments, between the Parks and Rec Department and the Street Department. We need to partner together to make sure that we can make these two projects happen at the same time, because it's beneficial for everybody.
Yeah.
And those, check with Brian Pike, there's most likely points that.
There are points for partnerships, and there's also points for the matching dollars. So if we're able to save money based on saved engineering fees, based on saved construction costs, those would also go towards the matching dollars for the grant application itself.
Yeah. And points for getting off, getting off of busy county roads.
Speaking of. So, any other questions for, for Rob?
Sure. Yeah, I just have one question, so I'm clear. We vote on this today the way it's presented to us, the way, Matthew, you presented it to us here. We get the grant, argumentatively say.
You know, the grant tells you about your significant plan.
Right, right. Well, we get the plan started today, so we get the.
This gives us the tools to go to the engineers.
Correct, okay.
When we go to the committee meeting and they submit stuff, they got very detailed plans of exactly what things are going to look like, and they're pretty detailed.
So from an engineer's.
You're talking about the application for the grant.
Yeah. So from an engineering standpoint, even if we agreed and we pass this tonight, if our engineering firm, or the engineering firm you're using, whichever, looks at that and says, oh my goodness, you don't even know what kind of problems we're going to have with that, we're back, you know, obviously, but we won't.
It's a, it's kind of a chicken and an egg thing.
Plus, it does, you know, like you pointed out, the bigger the project, it seems the more they like it.
Let's not have a big project just to have a big project, though.
You have to be careful to avoid it too. But again, the legacy, like I said, I think there's opportunities here, because the legacy fund, they are, they know we're squatting a little bit in regard to how much money goes where it does. You know, they know it's the time is right to do a big project. You got to be prepared.
Would they, just out of curiosity, would they, say a bigger project was presented, would it, would the, could it be presented in such a way with an, like, option A, option B, or would it just be one project, heads up, heads down?
Actually, it was ironic, because Marla put a plan, you know, A, B, C, one, two, and three, put it together over a three-year period of time, took the hundred and eighty thousand dollars she got from Cass and put sixty thousand dollars a year in it. They denied it all, and they said, just lump it all together, put it in, we could rather fund it all at one time. I was kind of surprised that they said that. They said, we like to see trails that come to some sort of a completion instead of bits and pieces. And I think if you get multiple communities working together that can show significant progress, that's quite unique. How often do you have four communities that are working together to put together a trail of this size? Grand Rapids did a project this last year that they're doing a bit of park, that was a hundred percent funded. Grand Forks put together one, kind of, it was already there, but they went in and did flood project stuff, where they were putting in trails and river stuff. I'd say people weren't as happy about that project, because they were using a lot of stuff that was already there, it looked like we were just providing money to them to upgrade something that was already placed. They like new things that show significant progress on doing new activities.
Okay.
Anyhow, I'll stick around if you have questions.
Awesome, yeah, thank you. Matthew, do you have anything else at the moment?
I do.
Okay.
I went through the notes of the meeting the other day, the mayor in a meeting earlier today asked the reasons why the decision was made, and I have a short list of some of the items that were brought up during the meeting. We took an extensive look at the GIS mapping that I provided to the meeting, to the council, to the committee members, looked at the number of property owners that were along each route, fewer number of property, properties that we would need approvals for, and looking for the County Road 77 option, there's just a couple of properties that we would have to work at, anywhere from one to three versus going a Lower Roy Lake Road, which would have been thirteen property owners on that route. From a tourism perspective, obviously, Nisswa's a very tourism-heavy community, having the route down County Road 77 would allow a lot of visibility to a significant amount of travelers that go along the north side of Gull Lake, to see a visible trail for them to utilize while vacationing here. The trail itself, all the way around the lake, follows 77. And to have that continuing along all the way to the junction of, or as close as we can to the junction of 371 was one of the reasons, just from a visibility standpoint. County Road 77 trail option would allow a longer portion of the Hazelwood Drive reconstruction to be utilized as part of this project and widening in the future. County Road 77 allows access to that intersection from visitors and employees and staff of Grand View Lodge to get access off the highway to the grocery store, to the liquor store, things like that. They do have a hundred-plus people that don't have, that are foreign help, that don't have access to vehicles, so they often will be biking to the grocery store, and it allows safe, safe, safe trail space for them to get to the intersection. One of the members defined Lower Roy Lake Road as an already safe route for biking or walking, the speed limit is low enough and the load is, the road is less traveled, meaning that the residents that are along there would have safe access along Lower Roy Lake to connect to the Gull Lake Trail and get to whichever direction they were going. Going Roy Lake Road to, maybe the west, south of that, connecting on the other side of Grand View and going that direction, they could connect there, or coming to Nisswa and connect at Grand View, at Hazelwood, excuse me. And that's just a short list, and I, you know, just didn't want those things to be overlooked. We had a lot of people bring a lot of great ideas to the table, and I wanted to make sure that their, their thoughts and ideas were being heard, so, thank you. Anything else?
No, not, not for me. Well, I would just say, you know, I really, I do really appreciate that, Matthew. I mean, everything that you said is. everything that you said is, is very accurate, came right from the meeting, so, thank you for that, I do think that all points of view are extremely important, so, thank you. So hang, hang on.
Yep.
Bob, did you have anything you wanted to say? You're here tonight.
I'm a big trail advocate, I mean, none of the projects, the suburbs and major community kind of has a character to your foot, but, part of my life is cycling during, I remember, bike lines, and a couple other things, so, trails are great, I got involved with that, got in with his team, kind of late, my ball, with the first two meetings, and the only thing, kind of the last thing, you know, I tried to bring the table, and so I built it up, is, you pick a trail selection, you also want to, want to, I was one descending goal, or different goal, maybe, I'm descending, old trails would be great, if you want to get kind of concerned, concerned, acoustical, and the environment being, of proximity to high traffic, or, or determined to ask, I love some things like that, so I kind of steered towards a more, 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 from that standpoint. And I also kind of lived in California, in an early 70s community, had, had trails designed in the community, and also being a part of both Colorado, both counties, for the last two years, where I knew, just trail great. Once you get the trails in, people love, even the center's turn around, there's no increase in, in, in crime, or any negatives, and recently see this, an acid 30 yard, so, I understand, and the public meetings, you know, to do something like that's great, so, you know, we should have done a couple of each other, but, let's go, what, is it done this year?
Okay, anyone else want to speak on, about this at the moment? Okay, Peter?
I just got here, one of the options I heard, if I heard correctly, would tend to follow 77 all the way over 13 to the, to the Hoover?
With your permission, I can walk over and show them a copy of that map?
Yeah, you, certainly. That, that was kind of a, that's kind of that, I, I used the word greedy, I probably should have used the, the term more aggressive thought.
No, I'm ready to make a motion.
I've got a letter I'm gonna read first.
You want to read the whole thing, Ed?
Yeah, it's only gonna take a few minutes.
I'd be willing to allow you, enter the, enter it in whole in the minutes without reading it.
I'm gonna read it.
May I be excused to use the restroom while you're reading it?
You could be right now, while the, we'll wait for you to get back, we don't want you to miss the boat.
While he's looking at the map, you can read it into the record.
Ask Terry about a tunnel under that hill by Zorbas, that I wouldn't have to pedal up and down that thing. She said, take Miller Lane. What's that? Yeah, there you go.
Push him on.
Yeah. Did he? Okay, well, I have a, I have a letter that I'm gonna, informational letter that I'm gonna read into the minutes, and the primary reason that I'm looking to do this is, I attended those meetings, the majority of them. While I was present, there was no discussion of the comp plan, zoning, smart growth, neighbor, smart neighborhood planning, addressing safe bike paths from, from the neighborhood for families and children, and so on, and I under, you know, I will, I want to say, Matthew, you did a great job, I mean, you've done a great job, this has nothing to do with how that process went, but I just feel there was something that was really overlooked, and I don't, and I don't know why, because I, while I was at the meetings, and I was not a member of the committee, so I, I tried my best, and I think everybody knows how well I am at keeping my mouth shut, I'm not real successful at it all the time, so I give lots of input, and, but I didn't hear any discussion about connecting this area and all the residences along Lower Roy Lake Road, and so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read through this, it'll only take a few minutes. And I want to start out by confirming, confirming my support for the connect, for this connecting leg of the Gull Lake Trail from, that starts in East Gull Lake, and comes up through Lake Shore, Fairview Lake Shore, and, and, you know, and the Paul Bunyan Trail is, is going to complete here in Nisswa. And I, I want to give a little disclaimer, although I, I believe the information in this letter is accurate, if there is any imperfections, I'm gonna apologize for it in advance, because the sum of the letter is my intent, not any particular little word or percent, or dollar number, or whatever it is. You know, the, the trail was started by a visionary group in East Gull Lake, primarily as a trail to connect the various neighborhoods in that community, but also included a vision of connecting their trail system to Baxter, and possibly a trail around the west side of Gull Lake, to Nisswa and beyond, and, you know, that started back in, what, 2005? And, so, I mean, kudos to East Gull Lake, you guys getting it, just getting it going and getting it started. The city of Lake Shore also deserves credit for putting together the Gull Lake Trail map, which Kathy Moore was a big part of, and that helps really spark what is becoming a fully connected trail system around the west side of the lake. I want to thank those communities for their hard work, their grand visioning, and its encouragement to neighboring communities to complete the trail. I've spent numerous hours learning about and contemplating the routes possible for the trail through our community, and the impacts of each of the proposed routes, and there is merit to both routes that are being considered. I have talked with two of our partner communities, East Gull Lake and the city of Lake Shore, to seek what weight they placed on trail location, weight they placed on community-based, you, intended use, residence versus business, and visibility of the trail as opposed, and along with vacationers, and, and people visiting seasonal home, homes. East Gull Lake, in my discussions, East Gull Lake was all about connecting its citizens to the trail, offering a family-friendly path, which provided safe, safety for families with children, trails for relaxation, exercise, and a way to visit neighbors. And that's obviously expanding, will expand, because of coming up around the lake and that now. The city of Lake Shore's Trail Committee was also, when I talked with Terry Hastings, was also very citizen-oriented, oriented, driven by the desire to provide walking and biking trails for its citizens. In their particular case, as kind of with Fairview, County Road 77 corridor is Lake Shore's main street, so to speak, to which it, the majority of its streets feed to. When I asked, when I asked the city administrator, Terry Hastings, said that residential was the primary reason for the trail, and that commercial and tourism was an added benefit from their perspective, although at the time of placing grants and so on, that is, those words are extremely important. I did research in this, in the Nisswa, Nisswa's comprehensive plan, the current plan, which is our old plan, and the proposed plan that is currently being reviewed, and will probably adopt sometime here in the near future, as well as city ordinances, and it was good to get refreshed with the vision and the goals laid out in those documents. Excerpts from that, from those documents read, "Smart growth was referred to using available grants and monies to accomplish goals. Connecting our neighborhoods to the parks, schools, churches, and downtown. Creating walkable neighborhoods. Enhance neighborhoods. Create vibrant neighborhoods. Foster distinctive neighborhoods with a strong sense of place. Become a bicycle-friendly community. Safe routes to school. Create walkable community. Develop a long-range plan for parks, trails, and open space with a main focus around connectivity. Being a family-friendly community." Some of these things are close and overlap, but they were all in different sections. Make development decisions predictable, fair, and cost-effective. And I thought what was important about that cost-effective piece is going back to where it talked about smart growth, and that was, and referred to using grants and monies to accomplish goals. It's vital to the success of the city-wide bike network that newer existing bike trails and lanes be connected to local amenities, such as the Paul Bunyan Trail, businesses, shops, restaurants, parks, open spaces, and the elementary school. In the past decade, 500 pedestrians and bicyclists have been killed, and more than 20,000 injured on streets and roads. Public health, more than 60% of Ameri, of Minnesotans are overweight or obese, and at the risk of serious illness, such as diabetes, heart disease, and certain cancers. By building roads that help support more walking and biking, communities can create opportunities for people to be more physically active while improving public health and healthcare costs. The city of Nisswa's Park and Recs Department mission statement states, "The mission of Nisswa Park Advisory Commission is to provide rewarding recreational and opportunities and facilities for the residents and visitors alike, regardless of age, economic status, race, creed, or physical or mental abilities or limitations." Health benefits of Park and Recreation, Parks and Rec, Trails encourage a healthy and active lifestyle by providing an outlet for various physical activity. Whether residents are walking or biking, the Paul Bunyan Trail, or playing baseball, provide essential spaces for people to exercise. And I would include in that with the Paul Bunyan Trail is this new connection in the Gull Lake Trail. When people have access to, to park facilities and programming, they are more likely to be active. These facilities also provide opportunities to be connected with nature. Chapter seven reads, in its opening quote, "Keep Park and Rec, keep Parks and Rec programs going for strong, for going strong. Kids need those activities, it will help them in the future. Create great new spaces by building vibrant, enduring neighborhoods that people, especially young people, do not want to leave." That's one of my big things here, is we are, I think we're missing the connection to our neighborhoods. Comp Plan Page 27, Transportation Goals. Goal number one, ensure trail systems are interconnected through the Nisswa community and regional systems. Plan and develop an interconnected accessible, accessible multimodal transportation system. Preserve the transportation system, possible grant monies could be available, and from, I gathered from Terry Hastings, are available for maintenance and future resurfacing, versus the city burdening full costs for any trails it puts in for itself. Affordability and sustainability, ties into Goal Three. The planning of this trail is a one-time event in Nisswa's history, and has many repercussions for the community. One that, one is that it will provide for the final leg of the Gull Lake Trail, connecting the trail not only to the Paul Bunyan Trail, but to Nisswa as well. Based on estimates of cost by the city engineer of, in the range, estimated range of $40 to $60 per lineal foot of trail, an approximate distance of either route proposed in length from County Road 77 and Lower Roy Lake Road, that intersection, to the intersection of Hazelwood and Lower Roy Lake Road, I came up with, based on my truck's odometer, 2.3 miles, and it's probably fairly equal whichever way you go, although I don't know for sure. But we're talking grant money, so I don't want to take that lightly, but that does come into play. So if you take 2.3 miles, and this is just from Lower Roy Lake Road to the tunnel, and multiply that, multiply it out by 5280 feet is 12,144 feet. That distance at $40 a lineal foot is $485,760. At $50, the lineal foot is $607,200, and at $60 a lineal foot is $728,640. And where that really comes in as an important factor is coming up here in, in what I'm reading, and so I'll continue on. Again, I want to repeat the importance of this trail to our, for our community, and my support for it, but, you know, partnering with this as well. As, as mayor and resident, I have to weigh what's best, what best meets the needs and the goals of this community, as well as how to initially pay for, and then maintain the infrastructure in the future. I did an unofficial count of Lower Roy Lake Road, including offshoot streets, and found that there are 188 seasonal and year-round residences, 47 current rentals, which all are in, in the Grandview family of business resort, which are on each side of Lower Roy Lake Road, they are actually on Lower Roy Lake Road, and with 15 to 17 more proposed in the next, in their next phase, which they're kind of getting started right now, and will probably build out over the next couple of years. It was mentioned that if the trail went up County Road 77 near 371, and went through the woods, that the city would, could always do its own trail, could do its own trail along Lower Roy Lake Road, and that came up at this last meeting. That was suggested, as, as there was talk about going up 77 and then north, up near the end of the golf course, or whatever that route may end up looking like, which is possible, I mean, that's very doable, but it serves not one resident, there is not one house along that stretch that it serves. And, so, if the city was to look at putting its own bike trail along Lower Roy Lake Road, it would be looking at $485,728,000, based on my estimate, which is maybe long, maybe short, it's, it's just a good guess is what it is. And that is a huge cost, and something I learned today is that, I had assumed that the, the trail along 77, if it went from Grandview up east towards 371, would be in the woods, but I learned today when Matthew and I were talking, that it actually would be in the ditch, it wouldn't be in the woods, it'd be in the ditch, so it's, you'd be literally be riding in the ditch alongside a county road, which from a, either a family perspective or a tourist perspective, I don't really see as that inviting. Legacy funding gives additional kudos and points for getting off of busy county roads and getting into more quiet areas, from what I understand. And it's a huge cost, it likely need, that cost of doing Lower Roy Lake Road on the city's dime, would have, would likely have to be fully funded by city taxes, which is huge. If the Gull Lake Trail would follow the Lower Roy Lake path... If the Gull Lake Trail would follow the Lower Royal Lake path, grants would pay for costs. And this is a huge cost benefit to the city. I mean, one that, when I think about it personally, I cannot overlook that cost and that benefit. And one I believe that we as a city need to take a hard look at. In addition, future resurfacing costs in 20 years or so, when needed, if the city would own a trail on Lower Royal Lake Road, it would be very likely the city could be and likely would be solely responsible for all of those costs. So it's a future cost beyond doing something now, if the city would look to do something like that. If the Lower Royal Lake Trail is a portion of the, or is part of the Gull Lake Trail, there appears that there are funding mechanisms for resurfacing. When I wrote this, I didn't know what I know now, which is there are, sounds like potentially mechanisms for that, according to Terry Hastings. This future liability should be explored and weighed as part of the city's decision before making any final commitment, as that cost could easily be several hundred thousand dollars or more in 20 years for that resurfacing. The city, to its best of its ability today, should consider future liabilities it would be committing citizens to. If the trail were to go up County Road 77 to near 371 and turn north, there is an interesting idea with it that was brought up as well, which was brought up earlier. And that, that is, the trail could someday cross 371, go east along County Roads 13, and connect to the Paul Bunyan Trail near Lake Hubert Depot. If this was pursued, it would connect to the Paul Bunyan Trail, creating another connection to that trail as well. And according to discussion with Terry Hastings, she thought that those sorts of connections were looked at fondly. Rob could maybe, if anybody had a question, could potentially ask him about that. This would create a triangle primarily inside the city of Nisswa, and could be used for walk-run events and other community uses. Grant dollars could be sought to pay for that, for that connection as well. Meaning that potentially, serving the needs, and if there's interest, which meetings would help determine that, of interest of people on Lower Royal Lake Road, and that connection over the Lake Hubert would all be grant monies, no monies by the city, and potentially no maintenance costs in the future. Issue with this concept happening first, which is going north and then along 371 or in the woods behind there, I go back to the city's comp plan and ordinances, which encourages neighborhood connections. And the fact that the Lower Royal Lake Trail, not being part of the greater trail system, would likely need to be financed with levy dollars if the city ever looked to do it. And we know how difficult it is to find levy dollars. Half to three-quarter million dollars goes a long way for our roads, streets, and other future needs. In conclusion, I am firmly, firmly in favor of the trail and its connection, not only to the city, but the Paul Bunyan Trail. And I'm asking the council to request the Park and Recreation Advisory Board, the Trail Committee, to review this question, to make sure that any recommendation that is made is the best possible solution. Not only as to the location, but also in line with meeting the city's comprehensive plan and ordinances. Also discussing where the dollars would come from, giving consideration to initial construction costs now, and where the maintenance cost burden would fall in the future. And those things would only be if the city of Nisswa decided to take on doing a trail, doing a trail through the Lower Royal Lake Road community. I would also like the city and this group to collect the thoughts of those who live in the neighborhood as to their interest in a trail along Lower Royal Lake Road, leading to Nisswa, for family use and purposes, and then around Gull Lake as well. That would really make my decision here much easier, if I knew what the citizens thought. The citizens said, "We don't have any, any inkling, we have no desire, we'd rather it went along the county road." That would really help me. But looking at the comp plan, I can't see how we can ignore seeking answers for that. You know, there were points made about visibility, being along 77. Basically, as it was stated, and because of any other options available, from the edges of East Gull Lake, through Fairview, through Lakeshore, there are no other options. I mean, there are very few other options for this trail. So to say they're all in the ditch, there's a reason for it. That is their primary main street, so to speak. So visibility-wise, the only visibility difference is from the boats and beyond to the entrance of Grandview, or down to Lower Royal Lake Road, is the only, is the only visual difference there would be as far as visibility. This trail, I firmly believe, will be the premier trail and get the most use. Now, in our area, the Paul Bunyan Trail is a bigger trail, it's a longer trail, it has many other attributes, but this trail is, I honestly believe, will be the most used trail per mile, without any doubt. That's my opinion. You know, I heard the, I heard the comments about Grandview and its employees. Safety is of huge importance. There's no doubt about that. But I don't, but as far as a consideration as to where this trail should go, I don't see that that plays into that factor at all. Grandview has many shuttle buses, they could easily, they run all day long, they could easily set up a shuttle that would run up to the grocery store for their employees and run them back again, as one option. The other option is, maybe we can get and apply for and do the trail up Lower Royal Lake Road and up to 371 and beyond and over to Lake Hubert, which would accomplish both goals. Again, my primary focus at this moment in time is our neighborhoods. And that is what I have to say. So thank you very much for taking the time to listen. And I hope that the council weighs this heavily before it makes a decision. What I would like to see tonight is that the council says, "Yes, we want this trail. We would like to get more, we would like to get input from our citizens before we make this decision." Because it's, it's a pretty common thread, that once you start exploring one particular path, and you start negotiating with landowners, you're not going to change the route. So I really strongly feel that whatever direction we give tonight will be the path that will likely be pursued, unless there was an absolute major crash and breakdown, which generally does not happen, that our citizens and our residents are going to miss out on a great opportunity. Thank you. Council, it's up to you.
I'll move that the city council accept the tentative Gull Lake Trail location as presented by the, by the committee, and approve the route as depicted on the map, and with the caveat that the word tentative is paramount in the motion.
I'll second.
So for clarification, how does tentative, how would you see tentative playing into that? What would you, what would that look like?
Well, if we start with a little bit of engineering, and we talk, we talk with a young lady who's going to be doing, I assume, going to be doing some grant writing, and we come into a little bit of a problem, we can move the trail a little bit here or there, or we can do something different. But using the word tentative means that it's not set in stone. It's subject to some jiggling around, or even moving to a different place if we see the need. And I think the reason for the motion is to get everything started, to meet the timetables that are coming up, otherwise we're going to lose a whole year and everything else. And I don't like to rush things, but I think we have a seven to one vote out of the committee that we've set up, and they've looked at everything, that they feel it's the best route, I'll go with their decision.
So a question that I have for Gary, because you were there, and Matthew, because you were there. Can you help me understand why the comp plan and ordinances did not come up, and for serious discussion and looking into? And I, trust me, I'm not trying to overly put you on the spot, I'm not trying to, you know, do anything, I'm just trying to understand. You guys are both involved with Parks and Rec. Why, you know, and I asked this to Matthew earlier today. And I said, "All I ever heard was 77, 77, 77." Matter of fact, the first meeting, I asked about it, and you guys said, "Oh, that's already off the table."
That's not true. You asked me about it, and I said no options had been decided yet. So don't, don't say that.
Okay. Well, and I apologize if you don't remember that. I had, I think I'd asked Jenny about it, and she thought she did remember it. So.
Were the words, were the words "comp plan" ever brought up in the meetings? No, I guess I don't recall that. But you mentioned spirit of Nisswa, a few other things in your letter. I think all of that stuff was factored into our decision. Did we actually break out the comp plan and break it down? No. But in keeping with our community as a whole, and the spirit of Nisswa, and the options that we looked at, this was the conclusion we came to. It's a committee that was set up for this purpose, to select the best options for the trail. It was a committee of city staff, council, community members, business, you know, chamber. This was the decision that was made.
You know, one thing I look at as part of discussion here is, you know, we had the chamber there, we had, and we had, you know, the resort there. We had nobody from that neighborhood as part of this committee.
That's not true either.
Well, okay.
Paul West is on there.
Okay, okay. I stand corrected. But we have, the point being, and I apologize about the little things, but the big picture is, we have a large number of residents that we've not polled. And I really honestly believe that that is critical to this process. So, I mean, again, that's my opinion. Any further thoughts or discussion?
Sean Hanson lives on the trail as well, the proposed trail.
Alls I can say is the route, in taking in your letter into consideration and discussing the comp plan, again, going back to Public Works and the possibility of us doing something with the stacking issue that the county will bring up when they do that section of 77, the proposed route were to become a road with the, take an extension of Hazelwood Drive, that would go a long way. If done properly and working with the landowners, especially the landowner, whomever it is, you could potentially end up enhancing their properties significantly for neighborhood areas. I could see a really, you know, if I don't have to put a road in, in order to, in order to access my property, I can now build on my property and put my money into that as opposed to building a road. So either route offers advantages, the other can't. But again, now we're looking forward to just exploring this, going down it, contacting the people, putting the presentation together, and getting public input, so. It does actually, the potential for it to slide rate and, and work rate hand-in-hand with the comp plan, I can see it. I can see it both ways. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Any further discussions? So one last question that I have is, is part of this motion, and what I'm hearing, that there will be public hearing meetings to get input from citizens about this? And with that, would there be the possibility of changing the route because of citizen desire?
That's the reason I inserted the word tentative, to make that a possibility. I did talk to Matthew earlier on, and I was concerned about public input. He said, "That's the next step, and we have plans drawn a little bit further, so we can talk reasonably accurately to people how it would affect their property." Right now, we can't do that. So this is the first step. And at any point along the line, if it doesn't work out, you can pull it back. That's why I use that particular word, tentative.
So it's the council, it would be the council's opinion then, that as long as it works out, there would be no change in the route? I'm just, I'm just looking to get clarification.
I think that would be the result of the public, public hearings, if I use that term, and the engineering, and we'll see how it all works together, and you decide at that
Okay. I'll call the, I'll call the vote. Don?
Yes.
Gary?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nay. Motion passes.
Thank you, it was a good discussion. I appreciate it. The last item that I have here this evening is the acceptance for the agreement for the grant writing support from Kathy Moore. As you heard from Mr. Mason, she's been the, had a big hand in this whole project from its inception, writing the master plan for it. She did this exact support role for Lakeshore's first application, which was accepted on their first try for their large portion that they're in construction on right now. She's got a lot of information on it, it's all in the tip of her tongue, she's just waiting to write it down. So if this gets approved, as you can see, it's a, we've got the funds from the Park Acquisition and Development Fund to pay for it. It is not to exceed $1,500. So I think it's very reasonable, based on the experience and what she'll add to the, to the grant writing itself. And once this gets approved, and now that we've got a trail location, she and I can sit down and divvy up the tasks that are going to be required to get this set up. She'll give me the list, I'll complete them, I'll get her the information, and she'll input everything in a nice flowery way for the legacy grant people to take a look at. So that is the request. Are there any questions on that from Kathy Moore Consulting, Moore Consulting, and for the, not to exceed $1,500?
My comment, Matthew, is certainly not personal, but I just heard you say, "Now that we have the trail location established," that sounds like it's a done deal.
For planning purposes, to get the engineering and the grant writing established, which is her role.
For that particular route.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure that it's, we're really clear where we're going here.
I'll move the request for the, for the, from the Parks and Recreation Commission for hiring of, what's her name?
Kathy Moore.
Kathy Moore, for, for an amount not to exceed $1,500, money to come out of the Park and Recreation Fund.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew.
Anything else from a park's perspective this evening? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Matthew. Item F, old business resolution approving county project within municipal corporate limits. We heard about that at, earlier. Actually, it was at Public Works, wasn't it? So those who were at Public Works want to make a motion on that?
I'd make a motion that we approve the resolution, the county project within municipal corporate limits, as discussed, or as presented and as discussed at the Public Works meeting. Public Works Commission, Meeting Committee also recommended that we go ahead with this.
I'll second that with a question. Did the county actually give you the plans, so that you could look at them?
They didn't give us an actual written, the plan laid out, they, what it's going to entail in the city of Nisswa is going to be the replacement of a few culverts. It's going to be... It's going to be the, about a 900-foot air segment of County Road 18, that's in that low area by where Clark Lake meets, and it's kind of sinking all the time. They're going to redo that portion of the road, surface and bed. And then whether or not there will be detouring is going to be, that was a question that the city engineer brought up to them. They are going to be submitting that information. He didn't have it with him. He's going to be giving that information to Jenny. And I believe.
Yes, but just to clarify, they did bring a copy of the plans, and Tom Blommer has them now.
Oh, Tom has them, okay.
Yes, so we have the details, yes.
But primarily it amounted to, there's not a lot that's happening with anything.
Yeah, they, they wanted us to agree to something that we didn't see at the last meeting.
Yeah, Tom has them. That's correct. Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Gee, council reports, mayor, I have none this evening. Council members? Don, you want to start out, anything?
No.
Gary, anything?
Nothing for me.
John, anything?
Uh, yeah, one item, actually two. First of all, just want, everyone should have a copy of, oh, where would it go?
Installation and Maintenance Mailbox thing?
No, there was a.
Public Works Council Report?
I guess I'll, I have it. We, I just want the council to understand that, just so we can recognize, Mike Wagner and the rest of the staff out at the public garage, we won another sewer award. Again, it's just getting to be a regular thing with them, they keep winning the awards year after year. Tom shot out an email, I don't know how many got it, I thought he shot it out, I tried to, but he shot out an email to all the guys out there and to Mike thanking him for his hard work, and I just wanted to echo that, that, so if you see Mike Wagner, thank him, he's making us look good. The other thing that I saw was that during the audit, it was noted that Maggie was really helpful in getting the audit to go through and all the, everything associated with the audit, helping Jenny out with that, and it went real smoothly, so it's nice to see the staff coming, working good together.
Thank you very much. Thanks for bringing that up, Tom. Is there a motion to adjourn then?
Yes.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 9:32 PM. Thank you, everyone.
You missed H there, did that name to be on there?
What was on there?
The, the school, Dale? But he was here tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, man.
Oh, it's.